Good evening, everyone. Welcome, and I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:00 p.m. here in Council Chambers. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Murphy, Messias.
Present.
Razak.
Present.
Timian.
Present.
Finch.
Present.
McNeil.
Present.
Castro.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
All right, we do not have any remote electronic attendance this evening. We do have a board appointment, a mayor's appointment of Laura Chumbly to the Keep Moline Beautiful Commission for a three-year term to expire November 30th, 2027. So someone who's already been helping that commission quite a bit, so. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to our presentations. 5.1, MetroLink Decennial Update. Ms. Hirsch, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for having me. Uh, thank you, Council, for entertaining me for just a few minutes, I promise. It is a very large document, but I will not go through every page with you, but maybe just hit some of the highlights. This document was a result of the Decennial Committee on Local Government Efficiency Act. And so it was an act that the governor asked that townships and some park districts, and of course, mass transit, asked us to kind of take a deep dive into our organization and look at ways that perhaps we could coordinate and become more efficient. And so we took on that challenge, and instead of maybe just chucking a box that yes, we did all these things, we wanted to take an opportunity to compile information regarding who we are, our history, how we're funded, um, what we do for our community, how we partner with our community and beyond, and really be very transparent. So I will just hit a few of the highlights here for those who maybe have not had a chance to go through it. Page four, five, six, seven, really again, talks a little bit about who we are as an organization. We do serve the Illinois Quad Cities with public transit. That public transit service includes bus, paratransit, microtransit, and of course, the Channel Cat. A lot of people don't realize that the Channel Cat is operated under the umbrella of MetroLink. Also noted, some of the major milestones that we have accomplished over the past 40 years. Talking a little bit about our community impact and our sustainable journey for the past 25 years through, you know, the introduction of compressed natural gas, and now we have battery electric, and pretty much all of our capital infrastructure is built to LED standards. So we're very proud of a lot of the work that we've done in the sustainability realm. If we flip to page 17, uh, this is where we really just, again, highlight our mission and vision to provide the best possible public transit service to the citizens of the Illinois Quad Cities. We are a mobility partner, and we also really believe in investing in our community and partnering with those that we serve. Uh, page 20 talks a little bit more about those partnerships. We've enjoyed a very, very long history with the city of Moline and have had the fortune of partnering on several very important capital projects in this great city. So certainly thank you for your continued partnership and really recognizing the value of public transit. Beyond our partnerships within our city government, we also work closely with our schools. As you know, K-12, we have a very large student ridership. And recently, within the past three to four years, we've been able to waive fares for that student population, so very happy that we are able to continue to provide that key transportation to students here in Moline. And we also partner with a number of nonprofits. One fun project I really just wanted to briefly hit on, we recently donated a bus to the Quad City Botanical Center. That bus has been turned into a mobile greenhouse, and so that mobile greenhouse is out and about in the community, teaching students, uh, not only in our local urban area, but rural area, about plants and about sustainability. So we were very, very excited to partner with them. This is actually a project that is first in the nation, and I think if you know us, we are known for being first in many things. And then heading on to page 30, we talk a little bit about that community involvement. We just felt that it was important to point out all the places we are very active in, whether we are visiting and participating in community events, or our staff is very, very actively involved in a number of organizations and boards and committees throughout the Illinois Quad Cities. So we really, really have a great breadth of service and are dedicated to what we do. Finally, I want to point out, um, and thank our committee members, which would be our Board of Trustees, especially want to thank the city of Moline appointees. We had two members during this time that the Decennial Committee met, Rochelle Carlin Krueger and also Sam McCollum. Also want to thank Maria Ontiveris and Doug House, who served as our public committee members. That is all I have. I hope I did that in five minutes.
Oh, my goodness.
Close, close. Happy to entertain any questions if you have those. Otherwise, I will conclude my presentation.
Questions from the council? Yes, Mr. Vitas?
What comes next after all these adjustments?
That is a good question. So as you know, we're working on our electrification project with you guys. We also received money for the Channel Cats to be electrified, and that is going to be one of the first in the nation as well. So continuing to try and be the first and be innovative.
Thank you for all that.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Timian?
How has the electrification been received by the drivers and riders? There's a lot of criticism about electric vehicles. I own one, but I'm wondering if it's shared. You know, has there really been any noticeable difference?
Well, I would say no, at least from my perspective. And I think we were very successful in how we rolled it out. And, you know, we started 25 years ago with compressed natural gas, partnered with John Deere. Then we moved to the electrification in 2018. And how we did that is we made a huge splash. We really put out a lot of public information, made it very, very exciting. So far, it's been well-received, I think, from the public on our end, because we're continuing to invest. So I would say, I would say well.
Good.
Yeah.
What about the innovations on bus fare, you know, apps and those kinds of things? Can you give us a short update on any of those innovations?
Yes, so we are working on a fare box. I shouldn't really say fare box, I should say collection system. So the old fare boxes would be removed, new ones would be put in, but we would also offer a cashless option. So someone, very similar, if you've ridden transit in larger cities, you can just take your card, tap on, and you're good to go. That system should hopefully be in place within the next 12 to 18 months, but that also gives us a lot of flexibility then to expand that. Maybe it becomes, you know, a statewide initiative where you just have that one card. So whether you're in Chicago or Springfield, you just tap your card and you're good to go. Or even here, you know, locally, in talking with folks across the river, you know, they would be interested in taking a look at what our system does so we can really make it seamless for people traveling here in the Quad Cities.
Great, thank you. Any further questions from MetroLink? Thank you so much for catching us up and for the work it took to put this report together.
Thank you for having me.
Mm-hmm. All right, we move to 5.2, our Key to the City presentation. Bob, will you join me up here in front of the dais? I'm up here, we're gonna come, I'm gonna come over there.
You're gonna come up, that's good.
Yeah, yeah. I know I won't be by a microphone, but come on up here. This is, puts us in the photo space anyway. I am so honored to be able to honor you with the Key to the City of Moline tonight for your selfless, unending dedication to hosting Thanksgiving for so many people in this community, not just in Moline. And as I look at this key, um, I thought about how keys are supposed to unlock things for us, right?
Right.
But actually, you've been the key to unlocking many chargers here in Moline, and we can't thank you enough for all that you've done, for the example you've set for younger generations especially too, of that steadfastness. Because we live in an age, right, where you can just flick to the next thing on your phone or on your screen or, um, you know, and find whatever you want. But the steadfastness to stick with something, the commitment and dedication, that's a learned skill, and you're a wonderful example of that.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you so much for everything you've done. It's my pleasure to present you with the Key to the City of Moline.
Thank you. Yes, first of all, you know, I thank all of you, and I am glad I'm a citizen of Moline. Been all my life, you know, but anyhow. And there are two people I would like to thank that helped, helped in the past, is Honey Matt Lake and Vicki Bertel Baker. And, uh, and I love being a Moline school parking guard in my 13th year and, you know, I'm at Sea School and, you know, and this is, the whole Quad Cities is a wonderful place to live. And I just thank all of you, and I wish you wonderful upcoming holidays. They're just right around the corner. Thanks a million. I feel very, very honored. Thanks again.
Thanks. And here's Bob.
Thank you.
And did you get your own hat? The same ones that they had at the beginning? You have one already?
Yeah, he's left.
Where's more of that came from? I'm sure. Thank you so much, we'll look forward to it.
I don't know if you all saw, but it says. So you can tell your friend Jay had a live talking turkey at your conference today. Thanks a lot, everybody.
Um, our, our communications friends would like to take a picture.
For sure.
Bob, maybe, maybe one where you take the key out again?
Oh, take the key out again, here we go. Fancy. I'll hold this.
Here, I can hold it.
You're all done?
There we go.
Okay.
I think we're all set, you got that out. All the members here.
Yep, right here.
Oh, okay.
That's great. Very nice. Congratulations.
Okay, thanks a lot. I'm really curious for this. Okay, everybody have good upcoming holidays.
Questions on the agenda? Just a little update for you here. Items number 8.7 and 18.4 had changes made to the attachment after the agenda was released, so you have handouts of each of those updated documents at your seat. Okay? If there's nothing further, we'll move to item 8.1. An ordinance amending Chapter 2, Administration of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Section 2-2200, days, times and place of regular meetings, adjourned meetings, by enacting one new subsection E1B4 concerning unexpected childcare obligations. Ms. Kostopoulos, did you want to say anything?
Yes, thank you. So this is really a housekeeping item to conform your ordinance with changes this year in the law. So in addition to the previous three reasons for attending remotely, elected officials can attend what?
I'm sorry, I just realized I forgot. I skipped over public comment and we didn't catch it. So I need to put a pause there. We'll put a pause there. Chief, I completely missed number six.
There's one, one public comment here.
Okay, no problem.
My, my, one, you look.
We'll move back to number six. Thank you so much.
Hey, how you doing?
Just fine. Please state your name and.
My name's Michael Williams, I live at 1708 53rd Street, Moline, Illinois. I have a suggestion or two about that intersection there at 53rd Street, and I can't remember what avenue it is, right there with YMCA is. Uh, I've been talking to the street department for quite some time about maybe y'all looking into maybe straightening that street instead of having that wicked curve that you had to go around there and the subway and such. What happens sometimes when buses are there or other cars or vehicles are there and they're parked and they're trying to turn there? Other vehicles have a tendency to want to take that turning lane and go around and run, you know, run into a problem. And there's been a couple of wrecks there because of that. And also there's, uh, school kids that go across there that go from one of the church over to the YMCA constantly. And people sometimes use that street down through there like a racetrack. 60, 70 miles an hour sometimes up and down through there. My suggestion is one way of stopping that is by putting speed bumps there, putting a few speed bumps there, or maybe putting some sort of overhead skywalk up there so the kids can go across the road instead of going, going across it, you know, like it is right now, it's just, it's a mess. And I'm sorry about my talking, but I'm diabetic and I have teeth in my mouth, I'm sorry.
You're fine, you're fine.
But anyway, uh, there's, there's a lot of things that could go on there that could make that a lot, lot better and a lot safer. Because of where it is right now, sooner or later, somebody could kill there. That's always true. You know, maybe a red light there, something, something like that. Maybe even putting in a, you know, one of those, what I call roundabouts or something like that. But putting a roundabout there might be more of a problem than it's worth. Straightening that, that street, you know, but maybe buying that corner right there and straighten that back a bit. Putting some, uh, speed bumps in there and making a couple other, you know, adjustments there could maybe solve a lot of issues and problems there. Especially with the buses, buses, they can't make their turns there. You know, unless, unless cars are not present, they just can't make their turns. They run over, over the curb, they run over the sidewalk and everywhere else. They're just too big for that turn. But, uh, the other thing is, uh, north of, north of 12th Avenue, where Franklin Street is, there are signs on both sides of the street that says, "No parking in this street, no parking on this side of the street and this side, either one." But there's cars that park up and down through there all the time, but you have these lines of traffic going down through there to pick up their kids from school or something like that. Anybody that's going up through there has a hard time. You have to race like crazy to get around all these cars in order to get in front of them going down the road, you know? Those, those cars, I believe personally, should be ticketed for parking though because they have driveways there, all of them have driveways, and they can all park in those driveways, but they all want to park on the street, which creates a problem, you know? And my suggestion is that the city and the police and so forth and such need to take care of those problems running up and down 53rd Street, you know?
Okay. Thank you so much.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for your concern.
Have a good day, buddy.
You too. All right, now we're back to 8.1. Sorry for that.
Thank you, and I apologize, I missed.
That's okay.
Public comment as well.
That's okay, we were caught up in the moment.
Yeah. Anyway, so we are only adding the fourth exception to allow for remote attendance.
Got it.
So there would be unexpected childcare obligations.
Motion to approve?
Second. All right, motion by Schmidt, seconded by Finch. Further discussion? Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
I had one question. So when, if I have unexpected childcare responsibilities, what would the rules be regarding executive session in that circumstance? For instance, if my eight-year-old child is there or my three-year-old child is there, there's different levels of how much I can keep him out of the room.
That probably deserves some follow-up, but seeing as it's a state, state regulation. Yes, Mr. Timian?
I will add, I've had to bring my child to meetings before because of lack of childcare, and the same question would apply. Could he stay in the room on his iPad during executive session?
Mr. Messias?
And is there an age limit too?
Is there an age limit, yeah?
Yeah, if you have a baby that might be, you know.
Will you clarify things for us and give us a memo?
Well, I'll get into that, yes.
Just so that, so that in the, should we enact this or use this? We're following procedure properly? Right, Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, I'm, I'm very supportive of the change. I have no problems there, and this, it's something that actually had been on my mind before when I'd been ill and the whole family's ill. Unfortunately, I've never been in a case where I was home alone with my kids when I've had to be there, but, um, it just, it had come up. Because they also don't stay out of the room, they're supposed to.
All right, thank you so much. If there's nothing further, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. All right, 8.2, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 2, Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix 4 thereof, three-way stop intersections by removing the intersection of 5th Avenue and 53rd Street South Branch and amending Chapter 20, Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix 5 thereof, all-way stop intersections by adding the intersection of 53rd Street and 5th Avenue South Branch. Mr. Vitas?
More than happy to take this, Madam Mayor. Members of Council, uh, the city did receive a request from the area residents there to add stopping flash signs, flashing stop signs, apologize. Wow. And, uh, that's pretty bad. Almost dyslexic, sorry. So anyhow, there was a request to install the signs. The Traffic Engineering Committee had the opportunity to review it, and they're recommending against that, but they are based upon the history at the intersection recommending the addition of a stop sign northbound on 53rd at 5th Avenue, recommending approval.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Messias. Discussion, Mr. Schmidt?
I had a question, as we're adding a stop sign there. That's a pretty big hill coming down. I mean, and I don't know if we have, if Dave was on remote. I, I'm just curious on what's the guidelines of when we should be adding stop signs to those big hills coming down versus not? And if this is an older way of thinking, just trying to understand from that.
I, I can answer that, Bob.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me? That was, uh, that was an item of discussion, the Traffic Engineering Committee was the steep slopes there, and the fact is that people are slowing down to make that turn today, and there were a number of crashes in that northbound direction. And the committee felt that it was really not any dissimilar to some of the existing steep-sloped intersections that we have on, on the foot of the bluff from here to the west. And so that they felt that it was worthy of installing the stop sign. And then, uh, maybe we ask that streets can blast some salt there when they come down and, and plow that approach. But either way, whenever you have still events, you, you just have to be careful and make sure people are able to stop at any intersection realistically.
We need somebody to mute over here, it's echoing.
Yeah, it's probably, it's probably me.
No, no, it's not you, David. In any case, on your computers or no?
Your Honor, it could be the other TV is also.
Okay.
Could be.
I don't know, David, it doesn't matter. Ms. Castro?
Is this the intersection that has the big rock right on, um, 5th Avenue? There's like, like that property and the property place like a really big rock to avoid having someone hit their house or their garage?
I'm not, I'm not picturing that at, at the moment here.
But, Mr. Dreyer, you, you say it reminds me of the intersection at 92 and 7th Street, where there's a stop sign at the bottom of the hill going north. It's a very similar situation.
And, and that was one of the intersections that, that, uh, the Traffic Engineering Committee, the folks who have long history with the city pointed out, yes. I don't see, I don't see a rock at this intersection. It's, it's really an odd intersection with, um, restricted sight distance and, uh, you know, the, the legs offset. So we just felt it was time to do it. It's been at least reviewed twice since I've been here, so. And, and there have been a number of crashes recently that PD brought forward, so we just felt it was, uh, time to do it.
Thank you. Mr. Messias?
Um, just a question. So it's over by the VFW, that back, yeah, so it's that one. I'm familiar with it. Is there a chance that there could be like a stop ahead sign? Because I know back when we did 7th Street by Steven Spark, you would always forget that there was that stop sign and you'd kind of slam it.
Certainly, and, and we can do that. And we're also going to see if Public Works could maybe get the Dynamic Message Board up there in advance of the change, so it wasn't a surprise to people, and they would be well warned of the change as they approach the intersection.
Great idea, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further from the council? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.3, A Resolution Approving an Honorary Street Designation in Honor of Daniel Gordon and Authorizing the Director of Public Works to Effectuate the Fabrication and Installation of Said Sign. Mr. Vitas?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of council, um, a member of staff in the HR Department, Brandon Tinwell, actually sponsored this particular request for Daniel Gordon to be recognized for his contributions to the city of Moline long before any of us were alive, including my grandparents. So it's a long time ago. So anyhow, we're looking to designate that portion of 26th Street where the church and the parsonage are located at between 13th and 14th Avenue, and to have those signs properly erected, erected, recognizing his name going back to when he first moved here in 1843, and then, um, his contributions from 1843 until the time of his death.
Thank you. Motion to approve? Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.4, A Resolution Approving an Honorary Street Designation in Honor of Robert Vogelbach, Mr. Thanksgiving, and Authorizing the Director of Public Works to Effectuate the Fabrication and Installation of Said Sign.
Madam Mayor, members of council, this one is on me. Given what we saw this evening and given Mr. Vogelbach's longstanding tradition of providing these meals going all the way back to 1972, uh, quite a run. And it's rare that we have people like this in the community who are still with us and have contributed so much to help so many, uh, without asking for anything in return. He's just a living example of a, of a great citizen of Moline and highly recommending, uh, naming that portion of the street that he resides on for his honorary designation, and that would be 26th Street, located between 37th Avenue and 38th Avenue.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Razak. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.5, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 22, Offenses Miscellaneous of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Section 22-1105, Tobacco Products, Tobacco Ethicaries, Smoking Herbs, and Alternative Nicotine Products Regarding Tobacco Dealer's Licenses to Create Three Categories of Tobacco Dealer's Licenses and to Impose Temporary Moratoriums on the Issuance of New Licenses for Classes A and C as defined herein. Um... Ms. Kostopoulos?
Thank you. So we did hear your comments at last meeting. We incorporated them, uh, here in our new iteration of this amendment. We have created now three classes of tobacco license. A is the primary retailer's tobacco license. We are limiting them to five. That is the current number of licenses issued. On, uh, our Class B, as we talked about before, is the incidental tobacco retailer's license. That is your convenience store, your bowling alley, those types of retailers that do not focus on tobacco sales. We are limiting those licenses to 36, the number currently issued. And then we created the new Class C, uh, the head shop license, which fills that gap of, um, accessories that might be used for cannabis use, which we realized in our research is not regulated by state or local law. So we created that license category, limited to five, which we believe is the current number of businesses that might fall under that category. We retain the moratorium, I, for the Class A, the retailer- We, uh, retain the moratorium, I, for the class A, the retailer's, primary retailer's license. That's the businesses, the vape shops or other tobacco stores where the primary, um, revenue is derived from, um, tobacco and accessory sales. We have limited, uh, I'm sorry, I lost my thought there. Um, we maintain the moratorium on those, uh, licenses until December first of twenty-five. If you want it longer, I would encourage, uh, an amendment to this. We put that in place when we first drafted this amendment. And at that time, it was about a year. So I would advise that we go no longer than two years. But I just want to bring that to your attention. Um, otherwise, we have also included as an enforcement mechanism that the class B license applicants must, um, sign an affidavit that they meet the requirements of the incidental license. And that is, um, our mechanism that we propose to, uh, monitor and enforce in those licenses. And applicants is different than the class A licenses.
Thank you very much.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Mr. Schmidt.
As we look at the three different licenses, there is room for some crossover, particularly with a head shop and a class C license and a class B and A. In fact, one of the places we have listed as a head shop in the current list, the location on Avenue of the Cities, I'm almost certain would also classify as a type A retail establishment. Um, it is without a doubt a head shop, but it is also without a doubt selling a large amount of tobacco product. Um, how, I didn't see a mechanism or anything that would deal with how we address that or how we would concern ourselves with someone who met requirements to kind of require two of those licenses.
Well, um, they would apply for both, just like, uh, liquor, you know, sellers might qualify for as a package seller and a tabber.
Makes sense, thank you. All right, Ms., Mr. Timian?
Your Honor, I would like to make a motion to remove type C licenses from the moratorium.
Second that motion.
All right, um, that's Timian and seconded by Finch. Discussion?
Uh, I, when we put it the moratorium and we started discussing it, the intention was to prevent the proliferation of a lot of the vape shops coming from across state line. And I agree with that. Um, the head shops are even by our own account, a very small percentage of what, uh, comes into the city. And I don't see the need to extend the moratorium there. Um, I think we can deal with the small amount of traffic coming in on a case-by-case basis as needed.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Hearing none, um, all in favor of this amendment to remove the moratorium on class C? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You can't say nay until I ask for it, thank you. Let me try that again. Those in favor of this amendment? Lord have mercy, we're gonna do a roll call. This is the last meeting of the year, right? And there was a full moon recently, right? Okay, we're gonna do a roll call, please.
Alderperson Castro.
Nay.
Alderperson Schmidt.
Nay.
Messias.
Aye.
Razak.
Nay.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Four ayes, three nays.
Okay. Um, so the motion passes. The amendment passes. Um, all right. So we're back to the motion on the floor. Our updated language and understandings, Mr. Schmidt.
Um. Get. How have we, these people did not apply for those licenses in their current states. Um, but they would be expected at what timeframe to apply for them under the new system?
Right, at renewal. So they would be grandfathered right now.
And we do all our renewals September thirtieth, correct? By September thirtieth?
My concern is we may have some that are misclassified or at least one that I think would qualify as a head shop as well as would require a tobacco license. In fact, the one that's called Avenue of the Cities Tobacco and Vape is currently listed under a class that does not actually allow any sale of tobacco. Um, so my concern being that we enact this ordinance that actually would call for fewer licenses than currently exists. Um, I, what is, I guess, what is the best path or mechanism for making sure we repair that or, like, accurately reflect it? I'm, I'm not trying to categorization so much as making sure we fix it.
Like, you, like, you wanna move it down to four in class C or what are you talking about? Maybe Ms.
He may need both, but I wanna make sure that once in the ordinance, does that impact a currently existing business? We're not making less licenses, we have businesses available.
Ms. Kostopoulos?
We did think about that as well. And in, uh, paragraph, sub-paragraph P, um, which is the temporary moratorium on class A licenses, P three actually addresses that, uh, that no existing licenses will be negatively impacted.
But if.
So they can renew.
But if we pass an ordinance that says there may be, oh, I see. Because they're existing and a holding, they can continue to apply for it.
Right.
Um, so I presume after this passes, then staff would have to visit with these businesses and assess with them what would be the correct numbers or.
That, that, all of those renewals, the clerks handle, right? So they would be gathering that information.
Actually, finance.
Fi- oh, for, for tobacco. Yeah, right, as of now.
Right, for the moment, yes.
Yep, but, but our clerks do the gaming and liquor renewals. Yes, Mr. Timian?
So I imagine in this case, if they really needed both, at time of renewal, we can just change the numbers to match it.
Yeah.
Knowing that, and that's, I think, the desire.
Mr. Schmidt?
My understanding is we actually wouldn't have to change the numbers.
They would be able to continue to operate with the licenses that they are renewing. Now, you do is a good question, which we may have to work out if, in fact, a business might need two licenses or want an additional license. And I believe we'll deal with that.
Case by case. Yeah, we wouldn't want to artificially inflate a number and leave an opening there that, you know, in anticipation of, of an existing business moving into that number because it could get subsumed by someone who wants to open a new business. So leaving it at the numbers that you've suggested is making more sense.
Right, and our goal here and intent was not to disenfranchise any business that is on.
Mr. Schmidt?
I'm wondering if rather than having someone applying for an additional license, it would instead make sense to also include the property. If you're allowed to do it at a head shop, which is the least restrictive of these licenses, you could also be allowed to do it in a tobacco retail store. I mean, if, I, I'm just, I'm wondering if it makes more sense to give them two licenses or to say, you also have that, you're allowed to sell those things in addition at that location. But even if I say it, I'm not sure I agree with that.
I can tell you from experience, from experience with liquor and gaming, it's better to keep it the way they've suggested. It's, it's very clear and we have an enforcement abilities better that way. Anything further from the council? All right, all those in favor of this, uh, uh, motion as amended? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you very much. Um, eight point six, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a First Amendment to program funding agreement between the City of Moline and the Illinois Housing Development Authority for the acceptance of three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in additional grant funding and to do all things necessary to execute all assurances and certifications to the Illinois Housing Development Authority for the Homeowner Assistance Fund Home Repair Program and authorizing the Community and Economic Development Department to begin work upon execution of the First Amendment Program Funding Agreement for additional program funding between the City of Moline and the Illinois Housing Development Authority for the Homeowner Assistance Fund Home Repair Program and to do all things necessary to implement said program requirements. Yes, please, Ms. Whitley.
She came up for it, so.
Yeah, thank you so much.
This is her program.
All right, well, good evening. Uh, two months ago, we, we were approached to see if we would like additional funding for this program. We hesitated. And one of the reasons that we hesitated, we simply do not have enough contractors here in the Quad Cities. But currently, we're working on a contractor event. So we hope to recruit some more contractors for this program. And then we talked to Ida and we were like, we need more time. So they extended our time until twenty twenty-six. So all of those things came together. So tonight, we're asking your approval to accept additional funding. Uh, with this program, individuals, single-family owners can receive up to sixty thousand dollars for critical repairs due to COVID. Uh, this is ARPA money, it needs to be spent by twenty twenty-six. But it's a three-year recapture agreement for the, uh, family and they can get up to sixty thousand dollars for critical repairs. So we're asking for your support.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Yes, Mr. Messias?
Um, what are the income restrictions?
Uh, for this one, a, a, a family, a household of one can make approximately about ninety-three thousand. So it goes up to about a hundred and fifty percent of the AMI.
Generous.
This is, this is a rare program that does that.
Ms. Castro?
And you said that it had to, um, be COVID-related? So does the family have to have like a COVID illness or something to? How does that?
They got laid off or something?
If they got laid off due to COVID, had hours reduced, um, someone passed away, uh, there's like, uh, about ten things on a sheet that they can check.
Okay.
And then we just send that in with their application for approval to Ida.
Thanks. Anything further? Okay, thank you. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Eight point seven, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement between and among Bi-State Regional Commission and the government, governments of Moline, East Moline, Mylan, Rock Island, Silvis, and Rock Island County for services related to holding and administering a con- consultant contract for the preparation of an enterprise zone application with Moran Economic Development.
Thank you, Honor. So all, uh, six governments that make up the enterprise zone, we've been wanting to amend the zone for a variety of reasons. We're looking at incentives, more importantly, we're looking at where the zone's located. Uh, we need to expand it, we need to reduce it, uh, because, you know, we've got the river edge, um, zone coming soon. So in order to do that, um, we do need to make an application. And so this money, um, would be going towards the consultant that's gonna help us make that application. So, um, as you can see, we, our attorney did have, um, David Silverman did have a couple tweaks to it. The other governments have agreed to those tweaks. They will all sign the same IGA. But, um, we're just asking for your support so we can get the application in and keep the enterprise zone moving. Dear company is a, the biggest user of this zone, and so that's our, you know, we're gonna make sure it stays there and then we're gonna decide from there if we need Rivers Edge or we need this enterprise zone beyond that.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Messias. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you.
I'm with you, Senator.
We'll stay there. Eight point eight, a resolution authorizing the Community and Economic Development Department on behalf of the City of Moline to apply to the State Historic Preservation Office of the Illinois Department of Natural Resources for a certified local government seventy percent to thirty percent matching grant for the amount of fifteen thousand dollars with a local match of forty-five hundred dollars and authorizing city staff to do any and all things necessary to apply for the State Historic Preservation Office certified local government seventy, thirty matching grant.
Yeah, so in July, we talked about, we had funding requests. We talked about the Historic Preservation Commission and this request to, um, try and go out there and do a survey of our historic properties, right? So this area has been identified, this Forest Hill neighborhood has been identified by the HPC as somewhere where, um, they think that'll be valuable. This grant, if we receive it, as you said, there's a forty-five hundred match. We're asking for that to come out of the council contingency, as we talked about in July. And, um, this will go, this money would go to have a consultant come in and do that survey for us so we can know what historic properties are in that area.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you.
Um. But we're at eight point nine, a resolution approving certain contracts for the purchase of treatment chemicals to be used by the Utilities Department for the calendar year twenty twenty-five as tentatively awarded through the Bi-State Regional Commission and authorizing the interim Director of Utilities to execute any and all necessary documents for a purpose of said treatment chemicals in the quantities needed for calendar year twenty twenty-five.
Uh, yes, thank you. So you, uh, Utilities Department participates in the Bi-State joint purchasing. And what that does is basically pulls all the surrounding towns' chemical needs so we can get some power, uh, in our buying, um, so we don't have to go out individually. And then what this does is authorizes utilities to go ahead and buy those chemicals as they came in through the lowest bid as needed through that. Um, the good news is, we did not see the drastic hikes in the chemicals like we've had in the past. A few went up a smidge. A few actually went down a couple pennies, but, um, it's, it's, it was nice to see it kind of level off a little bit.
Thank you very much.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you. Eight point ten, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a twenty twenty-five grant agreement with Project Now, Inc. for the administration of the Level Up Program. And you'll see this also on the, um, agenda and then regular council meeting because we want it to be effective January one. Ms. Kostopoulos, you have anything you want me to take it away?
Take it.
Okay. Um, if you look at the, um, scope of services, this is where we had weighed in in our, uh, budget discussions about what we thought we wanted to see the program look like, um, given the fact that we were, um, adding some money. So you'll note the, um, new categories of dispersment on based on the timeframe that they need it, right, for their particular issue? So year-long, um, oh, sixteen months, et cetera, fourteen months, um, et cetera. So we're trying to capture need in a different way based on time. Um, and then also, we added, um, in addition to single-parent or two-parent families, single adults, we know that there are folks especially, um, on the older side of the age spectrum that can be helped by this program as well. Um, so it made sense to open that up based on our conversation. So those are the two major changes. Um, and then just some technical language around the de minimis, the, the monies they use. It's really a Project Now thing. So that's what's the update.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Hearing none, oh, Mr. Schmidt?
Um, for the, the various length of time period, are those seeking individuals who are currently be, involved in the first cohort that will be continuing? Because, okay.
Some of them, yeah. Because we, remember, we wanted to capture that, that professional guideline, guidance of the longer people are in it, the better outcomes they have.
I, could, my concern was if we get someone now enrolled for. I, could, my concern was if we get someone now enrolled for fourteen months, that that would become a challenge. It would extend longer than what this current content is. So that's where they should, I, I, that makes sense.
They are very conscious of, of a desire on their part and, and my part in speaking for the program to not have people stay dependent on the program, to move them off, right? We just know that we had varieties of issues and some people could get off faster than others.
And I'm very supportive of doing that. I, I, in fact, I think they found a very elegant way to do that and make sure we're still gonna go as many families as possible. So I appreciate that.
Ms. Castro.
I was just wondering, so when a, a person comes in to apply, do they have to apply at that time for whatever timeframe that they want, or is that just determined after?
Determined by Kathy Jordan through the, the case management process.
Okay, thank you.
It's a rolling application.
Yeah, okay. And they have made sure, you know, I, I may, I double-checked with them, made sure, triple-checked, if you will, that everyone, because we got started a little late in the year, but everybody got the full twelve-month amount that was coming to them. So we're kind of starting fresh, January one. We're on the right timeline. If there's nothing further, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Eight point eleven, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding to establish an, the agreement between and among the Iowa Department of Transportation, the Illinois Department of Transportation, the city of Bettendorf and the city of Moline, collectively the parties concerning the installation and maintenance of removable ballards on the approaches to the multi-use path of the I-74 bridge.
We are, uh, we are strongly recommending approval of the agreement between the city of Moline, the city of Bettendorf, Illinois Department of Transportation, and Iowa Department of Transportation, who has led this project from the beginning. This would include installing two ballards on each side of the trailhead, uh, leading onto the trail. And, um, the cost for that is being actually borne by, by IDOT. We would have the long-term maintenance responsibility as we do for the trail. So we're recommending approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. A motion by Finch, seconded by Macias. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Timian.
Bob, assuming these ballards do their job when a car hits them and they are bent and they save lives, is the city then paying for another ballard to replace it?
Absolutely. It would be something that we would pay for through our insurance liability.
Insurance, okay. Should we have backups in place to rapidly replace?
Good question.
At least two.
I'm gonna make a note that we have more than one. We could actually store them at public works.
Cause I, I just think, you know, just for, I don't wanna go a month without one there if it's actually used or whatever the timeframe is.
That's a good suggestion. Thank you for that.
Mr. Macias.
Oh, do you have pictures of those, what they would look like? Are they like targets?
They're removable.
These are metal posts that are actually countersunk into the ground. They will, they will stop a vehicle.
Thank you. Uh, yes, Mr. McNeil and then Ms. Schmidt.
So are they removable by, or emergency vehicles? I mean.
They can be removed because they have a locking mechanism on them. So they can be removed as necessary in the event that we need to get up on top of the trail.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
All those considerations, I mean, there was a lot of discussions around that. You know, how do we, how do we get up there? Whether it was with ambulance, we have the gator, Bettendorf has the gator basically with the backboard on it so that we can get up there much easier. Because there is no access, as you know, from the travel lanes of the highway, um, heading, heading south from, I don't know, across the river from Bettendorf. There's no way to get to that trail other than on the trail itself. So it was designed to prevent people from getting onto the roadway is what it was.
Ms. Schmidt.
Does this require us to amend or enter a new MOU along with the city of Bettendorf to lay out? Who is in charge of these? Cause it's not like it says that we're in charge of the Moline ones and Bettendorf's in charge of the Bettendorf ones. And our current agreement is actually that we take turns being in charge of the entirety.
That is true.
So I'm just wondering what the, like, I think there's a second step here. Let's figure that out, I guess.
Well, I mean, the way, the way the agreement is structured, it's a five-year alternating duty of responsibility for the maintenance of the trail itself. Bettendorf, of course, stepped up and took the first five years, starting, I guess, in, that would have been twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, rather. It was actually twenty-two. So, you know, when our turn comes, of course, I mean, the only maintenance issue we've had on it is keeping the Oculus clean. They struggle with how to do that. That's the only issue I've heard from Be- from, from Bettendorf is keeping that thing clean. And I suggested, you know, using a snorkel on a, on a, on a fireboat. It's about the only way you're gonna get that.
Well, it sounds like if you're, if you think about being prepared to replace, that we would only be wanting to replace on our side. And if that's not clear, then we need to go back to our agreement and fix that.
We would clear that up.
But that's in agreement just with the city of Bettendorf.
Just between the two.
So that's a separate item anyway. I'm just thinking about the, you know, you bring up good points, but how can we handle them? This one, we can handle by itself because it's with IDOT and IDOT. But that question, um, clarifying that will need to be handled.
I will take care of that.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and either way, whether we decide that we replace them and whoever's doing the maintenance, if we pay in, like, I, whether we all take the risk for all of them or we just decide that it's whoever's side they are, it's just as long as we make a decision so that we don't come into that point where we have to do something and we don't know whose job it is.
Right. Thank you. If there's nothing further, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Ms. Temple, Raze Grant, update.
Hello, everyone. I have presentations in clicker. So, yeah, I'm gonna just touch briefly on the Raze Grants that we're working on. Actually, my project team members are here, Ashley and Chris. So I had, was participating in a local infrastructure, uh, boot camp that was sponsored by National League of Cities. And initially, we thought we might apply for FY26 implementation grant. But through this cohort, kind of felt that, you know, the riverfront project was better suited for this planning grant. So we quickly, um, kind of made the initiative to move forward with getting this grant in, which is due January thirtieth. So it's a pretty quick turnaround. And as part of this, um, we feel, um, they look strongly on community engagement. And giving that we didn't have a lot of time to, um, prepare a public meeting, this is serving as our public meeting. So thank you for entertaining me this evening. So basically, this is a US DOT federal grant program, offering a one-point-five billion, um, nationwide, um, for planning and implementation. So we're looking at planning, um, phase at this point. We are considered urban, um, for this particular project and we're considered historically disadvantaged area. So technically, we don't have a match requirement for this grant. However, um, you know, we do feel that we should have some buy-in to this grant. So we're looking at a DCO federal grant program match, um, additional grant to apply for to get us some matching money, um, to help our cause, basically. So the, the merit criteria on this project, um, which is geared toward the, the riverfront development would be safety, environmental sustainability, state of good repair, innovation, economic competitiveness and opportunity, partnership and collaboration, and mobility and connectivity. We need to score high in six or more of this eight criteria in order to move forward to get, um, you know, further consideration. So we have engaged with a consultant, um, to help us since it was a very, um, short timeline and that has been, uh, super helpful. So, um, to be clear, um, you know, we've, we're, you know, we've, you all are very familiar with the MKSK Riverfront Development Plan. So this is not to be confused with being another plan. This would advance the plan from what we're considering more of a vision, um, plan into design engineering so that it's ready for implementation. So it's kind of transitioning us from that vision into a project readiness. So let's see, um, our key project goals would be enhancing transportation options with a focus on safety, improving economic access and environmental resilience, designing safe, accessible pedestrian and bike paths, including a new bus stop and a new water taxi, uh, stop to make the site intermodal and promoting sustainable land use, infrastructure, and efficient building designs. Uh, we feel like, you know, we're meeting a lot of this merit criteria that we're gonna have a really strong application. The local infrastructure hub boot camp folks felt like, you know, we had a really cool project here. You know, it's hitting a lot of different angles that, you know, just a regular street project wouldn't be hitting. You know, we're including housing there, we're including, um, you know, recreation parks, just economic development with, you know, restaurants and, um, you know, possibly retail. So it's a great all-around project. I think we're gonna do, um, really well on this grant. We're calling it, uh, I-74 Riverfront Reimagined. That's just the name for our application. So, you know, this is really building on years of work that you all have done so far. You know, I'm kind of coming in, you know, in the, in the end of this, you know, whole planning, uh, process to hopefully move this forward to, you know, get boots on the ground and get, um, something beautiful over there on the riverfront. So our timeline is, um, as you can see, we're, um, working towards submission, January thirtieth. Word notifications will come no later than June thirty. And then we expect at least six months, um, of negotiations with US DOT, should we be awarded, uh, the funding. We're proposing, um, anywhere between five and a half to six and a half million for engineering design, pre-environmental planning, and detailed benefit cost analysis, um, that would be required if we were to submit for implementation, which we intend to do, um, either in FY26 or, uh, FY27. Just depends on how progress, uh, moves forward. So here's a map of the exact location for our, um, application. You know, I know there's other areas included in the MKSK plan, but this is our targeted area. We'll be looking at engineering design of all of the street infrastructure, um, within there, um, and right-of-ways, everything that goes along with the building that infrastructure. So design engineering on all of that. So I guess that's pretty much it. If anybody has any questions, I'd entertain those.
We very much appreciate you jumping on board all of this. Seeing a lot of the information come through the, our professional, um, organizations.
It's an exciting, you know, opportunity and it's an awesome, cool project. So I'm, you know, grateful to, to be involved and get to work on it.
Thank you for being creative also with your titles for all of your projects. I need like a list or a T-shirt with all of Dawn's projects. Yes, Mr. Schmidt, and then I think I saw several other hands.
And this may be for Dawn or maybe Bob question. So as we're running up to, we get this application in, we have time, we're waiting. Presuming that meantime, it would be still us working on making that decision about what we're actually wanting to go into that planning and design for. I mean, there's still as work to do before we get to that step that we're gonna have to do in the meantime, which we're gonna have to do regardless.
That, that is a hundred percent correct. In fact, we're looking to cut MKSK loose in January to wrap up their project. So now that we've finished the tower analysis, now that we have finished the site accessibility issue on River Drive with the property to both the north and south, uh, subject who purchased from DOT. Those meetings are being scheduled and those discussions will happen and that will happen. And that will then allow MKSK to wrap up their, their planning and design and work with council to move forward with an adopted plan to complement this Raze Grant.
It's actually really great timing to, you know, so hopefully, you know, this is successful and it kind of just smoothly kind of transitions from the vision right into this kind of engineering design plan.
And the rest of that project will still focus on the larger area while this grant remains focused in this zone.
Correct, because this is, this is the key to the whole area, right? And if this grant is received, then, and the funds are eventually applied toward the redevelopment of the waterfront, based on whatever MKS plans the council approves. That's gonna be the initial foray into what we're trying to achieve there publicly. That's not to say that something might not happen on the backside of this privately at the same time. And I can assure you, we're working on that too. So it's gonna be a busy area for quite a while to come.
I saw some other hands, Mr. McNeil.
Fantastic opportunity, thank you. So you said that in this timeline, they look for public participate, this is our public meeting. But in the narrative or, and do we get credit for all of the public participation?
We're writing into the narrative of all the community engagement that's happened so far. Alex from Renew will be helping, since she's been very involved in that process, she's gonna help write some of that narrative and how we've incorporated community engagement. Also, you know, the, the investment that the city's already made with, you know, site acquisition, maintenance, just all the things, I think, um, over four million of, of what I've tabulated. So, you know, that I think that speaks to, you know, our dedication and, and on this project to really, you know, make that commitment to get it done.
I would also wonder, it, along those lines, are you going all the way back to form-based code? Because we, we did form-based code partially also because we knew the riverfront was coming.
I don't believe I included that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry, just give me more work.
That was all my miss from finance.
But that, I mean, that was another place where we had a lot of community engagement and that's within the last four years. So in terms of relevant timeline, I feel like it makes sense. Were there other hands over here? Mr. Timian.
Just wanna thank you, uh, anytime we can save taxpayers four million dollars or so. Is, is time well spent. And so that's assuming it goes through. Either way, it's a great opportunity and I think it's very, very timely. Thank you.
Good. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. We'll call our regular council meeting to order now. Pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under heaven, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right. Do you have an invocation, Ms. Castro?
I do not.
Okay, roll call, please.
Alderperson Murphy, Macias.
Present.
Razak.
Present.
Timian.
Present.
Finch.
Present.
McNeil.
Present.
Castro.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
Your Honor, I request the approval of committee of the whole and council meeting minutes of December three, twenty twenty-four. Appointments made at committee of the whole on December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, and consent agenda items fifteen-point-one and sixteen-point-one, excuse me, through sixteen-point-two inclusively.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Seven ayes, no nays, that motion carries.
Non-consent agenda resolutions. Item number eighteen-point-one, a resolution approving change order number one and final with Walter D. Lawd, Inc. for project number fourteen fifty, Thirty-Eighth Street Reconstruction for the amount of thirty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars and thirty-six cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Timian. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Item number eighteen-point-two, a resolution authorizing the city administrator to modify the non-union employee group benefit package to incorporate the changes as set forth on exhibit A attached hereto relating to wages and health insurance premiums.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by Finch, seconded by Razak. I think in the questions on the agenda, I might have had the wrong. Nope, I meant correct. You were right. Sorry, read something wrong. My fault. All right, so we're back to discussion of eighteen-point-two. All right, so we're back to discussion of 18.2. Any questions? Hearing none, all, excuse me, roll call, please.
Alderperson Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Messias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Item number 18.3, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a 2025 grant agreement with Project Now, Inc., for the administration of the Level Up Program.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Schmidt. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Messias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Item number 18.4, a resolution establishing the City of Moline's policy entitled Paid Parental Leave Policy.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
I'd like to ask, what's different in the version before, as much as what we've seen previously?
There were just a few comments that were included on the original attachment that were not meant to be there. And then one sentence at the bottom was incidentally deleted, so, the very last sentence.
The accumulated paid parental leave as termination benefits?
The, no, the next one, it's on the back, yep. Just that it coincides with that normally.
Okay, thank you. Any further? Oh, we haven't made the motion yet, have we? Yes, we did, good lord, you asked a question.
Yeah, I'd like a moment to read and comprehend.
Yep. If there's nothing further from the council, roll call, please.
Alderperson Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Messias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Non-consent agenda, first reading ordinances. Item number 19.1, and ordinance amending Chapter 20 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix 5 thereof, always stop intersections by adding the intersection of 18th Street and 5th Avenue.
Motion to advance the second reading.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Messias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion to advance to second reading carries. Item number 19.2, and ordinance amending Chapter 20 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix 10 thereof, parking prohibited at any time by removing 6th Avenue on the south side, beginning at a point 110 feet east of 53rd Street, continuing east for 60 feet, and adding 6th Avenue on the south side for 15 feet east and west of the center line of the 53rd Street Drive intersection.
Motion to advance the second reading.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Messias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion to advance to second reading carries. Item number 19.3, and ordinance amending Chapter 20 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix 14, 15-minute parking restrictions in non-metered zones to include 1509 15th Street, one on-street stall, and amending Section 20-5109 parking time limits/restrictions established by repealing subsection C4 in its entirety and enacting in lieu thereof one new subsection C4 dealing with the same subject matter.
Motion to advance the second reading.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Messias. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Messias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion to advance to second reading carries, and that's all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Okay. All right, well, Ms. Laney's business, just in our last meeting of this particular calendar year. Thanks for all your good work, thanks to staff as well. I hope you get a good, deserved break over the holidays here and there. But the work continues in 2025, so, look forward to tackling new things and continuing some of the things we're up to, so. Mr. Messias.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Razak. Mr. Timian.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. McNeil.
I have a new title, I'm a snow angel, so...
Oh, yay!
My council persons want to join me in that effort.
Got it. Volunteers for snow angels.
I'll volunteer because I have a great snow blower, I did last year, so, and I just fired it up over the weekend. So, I'll join you, Dan. No shovel here.
Ms. Castro.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Vitas.
Yeah, I think I just want to bring one thing up. First of all, I agree with the mayor, and I want to thank the staff as well as this council for everything we've accomplished in the current year. It's been, it's been a long road getting to the end of the year, and, you know, it was a great pathway. I think everybody can just, you know, stand up and applaud themselves for all the time, energy, and effort we all put into everything. I did want to bring up that as we look forward to 2025, you know, one of the things that we're going to be doing is, as the council returns in May, because everyone is unopposed, is that we will look to begin the strategic planning process and, and, a new, basically, a new. In '21, when we started, we started out with 88 goals. Some of those were one-offs, they may just not, you know, get it done, get it over with. Some of those were council directives from the past. So, there was a laundry list of things to get caught up on when this, some of the current members of council came on board in 2021. So, what we're gonna be doing, though, is that as a part of that strategic planning process, that cycle, you'll remember that there was this cyclical series of events that have to happen. One of the things that we really need to do is we need to survey this community, we need to survey our citizens, and we need to survey our businesses separately from one another to get some feedback on how well did we do these past four years? Because that's really important to know. We tried to do that with Design City approach, just to get some general idea, but that is much more of a national-based approach to surveying, and it's really for comparability with peers across the country as opposed to the down and dirty. How are we doing? We don't want to know what they're doing in Sacramento, all right? I mean, that's nice to know, but we're more interested in what we have done and what we're, and where we're going. So that at least it begins to inform the dialogue and discussion that council will have in coming up with a new strategic plan. So, there's two phases to the process, and one phase is the surveying process. So, I'm going to move forward with bringing Northern Illinois University's Center for Governmental Studies on board to actually conduct the surveying. They've agreed to do it, they've been doing this since the 60s, they've been doing it at the, they've been doing it everywhere. They're well-known for this, and I know the mayor alluded to that when I mentioned to her this week what was going on. They would actually start working with us starting in January, and by the time we get to the end of April, the results would be in. So, in May, you would have the report, and it would speak to all things that we decide as an organization, both as the administration, as the directors, and as a council. You know, we're going to take a look at that survey to make sure it hits the areas we're most concerned about. You know, we've been bragging about how good we are and how great we're doing, and others are complimenting us. Well, let's make sure what we're saying to ourselves is true. So, it's a report card of sorts, as well as it is a guiding tool to go forward. Assuming that we're satisfied with all of that, I'd also like them to come in and facilitate this next strategic planning process for the city. I've used them in the past in Lake Zurich, and it was really well-done and well-received, not only by the council there, but also by the public as a whole. And, and it could help us to even, you know, take our reporting processes and everything to a higher level, even higher than where we're at today. So, I'm just giving you a heads up, that's what we've been working on to advance that. Ashley is taking the lead on that, and is the interface with Northern Illinois University. So, thank, thank you, Ashley, for that. And if there's questions, I'm willing to have to answer them, but I think this basically rounds out the commitment we made when we adopted our first strategic plan in '22.
Great. Thank you so much. Any other staff updates? Okay, hearing done. I believe, is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we move to executive session.
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, 5 ILCS 120-2C1.
Second.
All right, motion by Messias, seconded by Timian, roll call, please.
Alderperson Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Messias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
All right, we move into the next session.